Put my daughter on the bus for the first time.
All right.
Come on, let go.
Did you cry?
It's Tuesday.
I cried. That was worse than Saturday morning.
September 6th, excuse me Paul. At about 7:10, I'd like to open the business meeting for the zoning board of appeals. First order of business is finance. Patty, take it away.
Okay. Okay, so we didn't get a chance to do the end of fiscal '16. So, did I give you the warrant first?
Monthly finance update with warrant to sign, yeah.
My packet of warrants first.
Yeah.
Okay, so that, that I emailed Jeff with what I got. And it's listed there underneath and if you guys can sign that. While that's going around.
Make a motion on this?
Yeah.
Oh gee, yes.
Do I hear a motion? Or somebody want to make a motion?
Make a motion to approve the warrant for W. B. Mason and supplies for $170.32.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None that motion carries. Now I think you got the report.
Yes. Okay, so FY '16 is first. The first sheet is the expense line item. Which is still broken up. Phone, postage, supplies. If you notice, there's, in tiny, we have all new account numbers. So, that's why there's, the print is so small in some of those. And they're categorized in different, different things. So, on the bottoms, what we spent, what was remaining for the phone was $44.66. That goes back to town. And the $50.29 also.
Let's see. Year start or end?
June, June 30.
That was the balance as of the end of?
Oh, hold on.
I mean, we're already?
Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute. Hold on a second.
Thought we just started.
That should say seven, not eight. See on eight, April Horizon.
Well, it goes from, oh.
These, these dates are?
It goes from three to four to three, but then you have expenses through April and then it jumps to August.
That's the day I plugged them in.
Oh, okay.
The August dates. So, I gotta fix that. That's the dates. The phone bills come in so late. Like, we didn't get the phone bills for June until August.
Right.
And I didn't get a chance to meet with Mary.
I'm just wondering, so this rees, doesn't this reset coming up here?
Yeah, it's, yeah.
You get the, you get the 400?
The eight, the eight sixty total is gonna reset when we get to FY '17.
Which is?
Coming in the next pages.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, that's okay. And then I throw in this updated, the next one is a, it's folded in there. So, FY '17, Eight Long Hill, which is tonight, and the one that was filed last week, Eleven Martel. So, we balance $241 and change. Skip the next page. We had the tax collector's office. See, it says balance on postage meter. So, we balance with that.
Okay.
So, I think we're good on postage. So, I didn't put anything in postage. I left the 400 filed, 400 supplies. FY '16 revolving. So... On the first page, I have that circled with, is $12,596. That's what was transferred. And you look at the next sheets, the munis, printouts from the town accountant. And you see that number, you won't know what it means. So, I just wrote, this is where the new accounts came in, that she had to make transfers. Of what was left of the money. That's all that means. So, the balance rolling over is $12,218. So, fiscal '16 amount spent was $4,051.53. And the fees taken in were $2,100. The next page is just, I put in Mary's, the town accountant's, what I go by to balance everything. So, that just shows you that $12,596 transfer with the new accounts. And then we balance with, see, it says start revolving FY '17, $12,218.
Yeah. See the new expense line, $2,286, there it is.
So, now fiscal '17.
Let's say we can't be down to thirty bucks.
So, the new revolving, I start with the $12,218. So, for you guys, Dave and Sean, the revolving account, we don't get new money every year. This just keeps going. We haven't actually had to put money in here since 2001. We did have $35,000 back then and then they cut it to 20,000.
This is where our fees go, though.
This is where the fees go and the revolving hours come out of. So, right now, the revolving hour is the deposit on Long Hill, the deposit on Martel Way, which is two applications. So, that's, gives us $1,700 in fees and we've spent $338.84. So, we're ahead now.
I think we did.
We increased the fees as of July.
Yeah, that, that kinda helped.
Yeah.
Definitely helped. And then FY '17 expense, so that's cleared out now. So, just the warrant for tonight, W. B. Mason isn't there. And Patty, hit next page. Okay, that's it for finance, if you wanna. So, the minutes were emailed out, 7:27. So, there was?
What was, business or hearing?
Business. Business and the hearing was 55A Bailey Lane. So...
Want two separate motions?
David didn't vote, David was absent for business.
Yep.
So, that's why I put two motions in there.
Say in here?
Kids.
Already, or?
No, I just usually just email them.
Oh, yeah, the minutes, right.
Yeah.
Not the motions. So, do I hear a motion to approve the business minutes of July 12, 2016?
So moved.
Thanks Gina, is there a second?
A second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None who abstained? Who was not here that day?
David.
Twist?
Abstained.
Okay. Okay, motion carries. Do I hear a motion to approve the meeting, the hearing minutes for 55A Bailey Lane from July 12?
So, who didn't, Sharon and David Twist did not vote for that. But I don't know if that?
The business minutes?
Yeah, the hearing minutes.
Oh, the hearing minutes.
Hearing minutes. I don't know if it matters.
Well, they, you weren't here, right?
I was here.
He was here, but they weren't voting members. But they were still here.
Yeah, you didn't need me.
Okay. Well, does somebody want, somebody else want to move to?
I'll move to approve the hearing minutes of 7:12, 2016, for 55A Bailey Lane.
Thanks Gina. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, none. Two abstentions, say?
Abstained.
To be abstained?
Uh, you don't have to.
No, I don't think you have to.
It doesn't matter to me, I'll do whatever you want.
All right, great, thanks.
Okay, so...
Now you have a meeting schedule, right?
Yes, and we do this every September. So, the only thing is, when you go down to July, 4th of July is actually the first Tuesday we always meet. So, I just automatically pushing it to, like we did this year. It was, didn't fall on it, but this year it falls, 2017 will fall right on the first Tuesday. So, we can do it July 11th, the second Tuesday. That's okay. And then, everything else, like, we do the day after Labor Day, today's a day after Labor Day. That seems to work out fine. And then there's no election, so we can do the first November. No election for 2017. So, if you wanna?
It will be a year end?
Do we wanna, um?
Make a motion to?
I would say?
If those are okay.
That we'll see how it goes for? We don't have, after January 1st, we don't usually have an issue with that week, I guess.
Yeah, it's like today, the day after New Year's.
Yeah, right. July maybe, or August, we usually push, unless there's something going on.
Yeah, and if something happens then, I can always push it.
Does anybody have any dates that particularly have angst with?
A lot of them are early.
Play it by ear.
Yeah. It's all fine.
Do we wanna move to approve this calendar, I think? Okay. Does somebody want to make a motion to approve the meeting calendar for 2017?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the meeting calendar for the hearing dates for 2017.
Thank you Gina. Second, anybody?
Second.
Paul, I think got that one.
Yep.
All right, motion to approve, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, none. Consider that draft.
Our first one, this is an email from town administrator. Subject was site visits and he just goes over, I don't know if there was some change, there was some confusion over how different boards do site visits different. When, I don't know, the last site walk we had, I think it was when we had the cell tower by East Main with the balloons, the four, 200 to 400 foot high balloons. Remember that? We have?
Oh, they did the balloon test?
Yeah. And it just goes over what you can and can't do. Or maybe pull that out and put it in your, like, if your binder or something, just about it.
Yeah, worthy to be, it's good to be familiar with it. Particularly if there's a quorum.
This notice, the notice which I was gonna do under other, because I have on the agenda 64. There's a notice for the planning board that I got the last minute, for September 28th, for zoning amendment for groundwater protection. I think this is for fall town meeting. There is a letter July 19th from building inspector to the attorney for Mr. Scovanos, the Duncan Donaghy Plaza, Georgetown Plaza. He was just, he asked Les a bunch of questions and these are Les's answers. So, right now, I think as it stands, what they're doing is they need to go to the planning board at this point.
Yeah, he had asked me about some of the history on this. This was, we've had, most of you probably remember, we had several hearings on that. And I guess in a nutshell, what we had given them was a modified variance to allow for certain uses in any particular way that they felt were necessary. They didn't have to come back here every time they wanted to change out a tenant, as long as it met the uses that we had defined. Restaurant use was one of them. So, as long as they basically met the limitations for parking and septic and all of that, they were constrained by the site. So, anything that we allowed in that variance, they're allowed to do, as long as they meet all the requirements.
Which is why you put their new septic in.
Right, they, that's part of it. They increase their septic capacity so that they can then try to balance their tenant capacity and tenant needs with the amount of septic and parking that they have. So, anyway, he came, he had asked me a little bit about the history, so I had a conversation with him about the decision that we had made, to kind of clarify a couple of things. So, anyway, they're looking to, I don't know exactly what they're looking to do, but they're changing out some tenants.
Well, right now, what I found, what I know is, there is a, like, we need another pizza place. There's a Domino's Pizza going in. And I believe Kentucky Medical that's in there is leaving at the end of September.
Right.
I know, because I take my mom net. Found that out.
No, we noticed their argument for putting in the bigger septic.
There you go.
For more medical.
I know.
There you go.
Restaurant, I think restaurant takes a lot of time.
Yeah.
All right.
I don't know, I never had Domino's, isn't that just a take-up place?
No, not anymore.
Yeah.
They do sandwiches and they changed their whole.
Um, the next is, and this goes back to, um... Eleven Martel Way, which is your next hearing for October 4th, from attorney Nancy McCann, McCann in Danvers. And I gave you Les's determination letter. Underneath that is the letter from attorney McCann requesting what she would need. And then I put, this is eleven Martel, I put the previous decision we did in 2012. It was for, remember the kayak place?
Yeah, kayak factory.
Yeah, it was them, so.
They didn't make it?
I don't know what hap, I don't know what happened. They're moving anyway and this, uh, Robert Salter has a PNS, purchase and sale. For this indoor storage of automobiles. And if you read the letter from attorney McCann under Les's, I'll call it the denial letter of the zoning determination. She goes into a little bit of what, well, when you get the packet, you can read the whole thing and see the plan.
Have they submitted an application already?
Yeah.
Okay. So, they're on the docket, okay.
Yep. Legalizing.
So, that's gonna be for a water resource, correct?
Special permit and water resource.
Special, okay.
Yep.
I'll move to water resource.
Special permit, special permit for the, for the use.
Right.
And then special permit for water resource, sorry.
There we go, thank you.
And, um, just the other thing is, we had a, this is the, I emailed this to you. But it's a strategic vision, visioning, it's community feedback. They were having these, I think it started with what was called the steering committee at some point. And this is all the feedback they got. And so, Mike Filterponti headed it up on August 23rd. We were up here, all the department heads, and then me. And we just went through, you know, what, what we could put together for feedback to what this report says. But a lot of it goes back to funding. Everything's like sewage downtown, a septic downtown, and mixed uses and everything goes back to, you know, where do you get the money for it?
Yeah.
So, um, and with that, Mike had sent out a follow-up email, just thanking Phil and then just saying that the next step is to go back to a citizens forum for their reactions. And then start prioritizing and developing actionable goals and objectives to make things happen. And then he says, this is just another, not just another planning exercise, it will be an input, implementation exercise. Because, you know, we kind of did this stuff before and nothing ever came of it.
Right.
We have a 2007 master plan, that's 10 years old now.
Right. I believe it was that old already.
Yeah, 2007.
That long ago they did that.
Yep. And...
All right, so you have a new application to distribute?
Yeah, we're gonna do this. That's what I'm in order by way of sending very much.
All you need to do is just increase the cover sheet about thirty feet.
Oh. And then, if you can hand me that warrant. And then the motion to close, if you want, motion to close business?
Yeah, is there any other old business anybody has, can you discuss? So, a motion to close the business meeting for September 6th?
So moved.
Thank you Sharon, anybody want a second there? Was that Dave?
Give it to Gina.
Gina gets it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, none. The business meeting is closed and do we need a minute to get to the hearing or we want?
We, yeah, one minute. 7:27.
Okay.
So, a couple minutes.
You want to let them know when we'll be back? Got it. [Music]
There we go, okay. Alrighty, it's about, it's about seven thirty-five on Tuesday, September sixth. I'd like to open the tonight's hearing for Eight Long Hill Road. We'll start by reading the legal ad, Sean, you wanna take care of that for us?
The legal ad reads as follows: Town of Georgetown zoning Board of Appeals. The public hearing will be held on September sixth, twenty sixteen, at seven thirty P. M. At the Georgetown Hall, third-floor meeting room, for an application filed by John and Rachel Cancelera of Eight Long Hill Road, Georgetown, Massachusetts, for a special permit to construct an accessory apartment addition to a single-family dwelling at the rear of the residence where a deck currently exists. The property is located at Eight Long Hill Road in the RB District, as identified on assessors map fifteen, lot fifty-seven J pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter forty-eight, Section nine, and the Georgetown zoning bylaws, Chapter one sixty-five, Sections nine, sixty-nine, seventy-four, seventy-nine, ZB A, file number sixteen dash oh-eight. This was at thirteen four six six two thirty-two, and went in the Georgetown Record on August nineteenth and August twenty-sixth, twenty sixteen.
Perfect, thank you. And I neglected to read the rules of procedure for tonight's hearing. So the Board of Appeals will conduct this hearing in accordance to the rules laid out in Chapter forty-eight of the General Laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Robert's Rules of Order and its own particular set of rules entitled Rules of Procedure, a copy of which is on file with the town clerk. Another copy is available from the clerk at this meeting. This meeting is being recorded for the purposes of taking minutes. Once the minutes are approved, the tape may be taped over. So I'll just take a minute and introduce the members of the board. This is Dave Quiss, Sharon Freeman, Paul Schillen, Sean Dean, all voting members tonight. I'm the chairman, my name's Jeff Moore. We read the legal ads, so why don't you guys introduce yourselves and tell us what's going on at the address and what you're here to talk about.
My name's Arasio Guevara. I'm the president of Just Art, also the designer of the project. I'm working with the homeowners in proposing a six-hundred-and-eighty-six square-foot in-law apartment at the ground level or basement level of the existing home. This is Donnie.
Donnie Suttermore, I'm the contractor for the project, working with the homeowner, and also Arasio with the drawings.
So.
Do you wanna go through the plan of what you've got here?
Sure. We currently have an existing deck on the back of the house that is proposed to be demolished, and the new addition is approximately thirty-eight feet wide and nineteen, twenty-four feet deep at its deepest section. The roof of the addition will be replacing the existing deck of the main house. So we're gonna be using, the proposed roof is a flat roof, putting a wood deck on top of it so they get their deck back from walking out to the first floor. The access to the apartment will be from the existing basement, and she'll have two exit doors on the exterior, one off her kitchen and another one off her main living space. It's gonna have one bedroom and one office, and a full bathroom, all on the same level. It's not handicap accessible, there's no need for a tubey, and there's be a full set of stairs to go up to the roof deck that will be replacing the one that's removed. There is no work to existing basement, there's a current utility room, laundry room area with a furnace that will be her interior entrance, no access to the existing garages, those belong to the main dwelling. There's no work to the first floor, other than replacing it with a new deck coming off their main kitchen and dining room area. And then, as we go up to the second and third floor, there's no work being done to those areas. So the current house is about twenty-five hundred square feet of living space, and the in-law apartment's gonna be six-hundred-and-eighty-six square feet of living space. On the color drawing that I gave you, the beige areas indicated as the living space, the green is considered closet and bath exclusions according to your zoning bylaws. The addition's gonna be constructed of a slab-on-grade, no basement, which will be a step down from the existing basement so that we can gain proper headroom. That's why it shows a couple steps going down into it. And we're doing that so that the deck above on the first floor will also have a step-down, so it's not higher than the existing sliding door. And structurally, exterior walls two-by-six, the ceiling is all eye-joist to make these large clear spans. The rear deck is gonna be composite decking, and the porch off to the side will be composite material as well. That circle diameter that's shown on the basement plan is the ten-foot radius from the septic tank cover, which is also shown in the plot plan. And the leaching field is twenty-five feet away from the proposed addition. Septic tank is ten feet from the edge of the tank. That's why the addition has the L-shaped design to it, so that she could gain as much living space that would be practical with the proportions of the house, but at the same time, we stepped it with the shape of the L to maintain the setback clearance from the septic tank cover. If you go to the second drawing, six of six, I did the color renderings of just the proposed. Not in too much detail as far as finishes, but pretty much everything's gonna match the existing. The colors I chose, it just delineate materials of siding and windows. I did a three-D rendering to give a better perspective of what the addition would look like. And it's height-wise, it doesn't exceed the first floor floor line. Everything stays within about nine to ten feet from top of deck to finish grade. They're grade slopes away from the property, about, it's about a foot every ten feet. It goes down pretty steep. So we're stepping the foundation as well, which also gives her the advantage of having the addition at a lower level, so that we can get that clearance for the roof deck above. So it's to their advantage that she's gonna be able to have an eight-foot ceiling with the site being sloped down like that.
Good. Okay. Do we have any correspondence? We had a couple, right Patty?
Yes. Just the one from Board of Health, and then the other at the end is from Les about the height.
Okay, you added the pictometry too.
Yeah, that's just.
Everybody's packages this one.
Yeah, I just cast it out for you guys to.
Oh, you got one over there.
They have one, yeah. Could see kind of the back of the house.
Yeah.
So I had sent an email to Deb Rogers, like we do with all accessory apartments, just to check on number of bedrooms, number of rooms.
This is Exhibit A.
This is from Deb Rogers. Subject Eight Long Hill Road. I'm not sure who it's, who is, who's it sent to? Donnie Suttermore?
Yeah, that's me.
This is.
Okay, great, thank you. That would be you then. The Board of Health approved the proposed in-law apartment, according, located at Eight Long Hill Road in Georgetown with a four-bedroom deed restriction, which the owners will be responsible to record at the registry of deeds. The recording will take place after the zoning board approves the proposed accessory apartment special permit and before the building permit application is signed by the Board of Health. Total number of rooms will not apply for the in-law apartment, which is allowable in accordance with Mass Title Law five. The applicant may design a system using design flows for a smaller number of bedrooms than are presumed by granting to the Board of Health a deed restriction limiting the number of bedrooms to a smaller number. Therefore, the applicant complies with the Board of Health jurisdiction.
That was Exhibit A.
What does that basically mean?
So, so the easiest terminology, I guess, would be, so they have four bedrooms now. We're adding another bedroom for the in-law apartment. So they have to file a deed restriction on their property, because when it comes time to sell the property, they can only sell it as a four-bedroom. At that point, if they need a new septic system and they upgrade their septic system, then they can upgrade to a five-bedroom and then list it and sell it as a five-bedroom. The deed restriction would be filed with, obviously with the deed, and, you know, so any potential buyer would know that ahead of time if they were gonna purchase one.
It's going on record that it's still a four-bedroom, even though they're adding another bedroom, right?
Yeah.
So when it comes out, when someone, when, if it gets sold, it'll pop up with the deed that there's that restriction on it, otherwise they have to come back, go to the Board of Health and get a five-operated septic system.
Yep.
So they could not have an in-law like they do?
No, they, they could.
I know, they could.
They could.
It has to be a, it's a four-bedroom home unless the septic is redesigned to support something larger than that. So that other room is turned into a den or a study or something.
If they wanted to sell it for the value of a five-bedroom, they have to make the septic compliant, yeah.
I'll get to any other questions in just a second. Let me just read these into the record before I forget Patty. So Exhibit B is going to be, for title of this, it's a plot plan. It doesn't really say it on there, but it's a plot plan, locusts plan. Do you want me to read in all the dates and all that, or?
Yeah, yeah.
They're with the application. Dated seven nineteen twenty sixteen. Exhibit C is going to be the existing basement foundation plan and existing first-floor plan, dated eight eleven.
Yeah, it's revised, I believe.
Revision two, yeah, twenty sixteen. Exhibit D is gonna be the existing second-floor plan and existing third-floor plan, also dated eight eleven, revision two. Exhibit E is the existing west elevation and the existing south elevation, also dated eight eleven, revision two. Exhibit F, existing east elevation rear, existing north elevation, dated eight eleven, revision two. Exhibit G is the proposed basement plan and in-law apartment and the proposed first-floor plan dated eight eleven, revision two. And lastly, we have Exhibit H. The proposed south elevation, the proposed east elevation, proposed north elevation dated eight eleven, revision two. I'm gonna go ahead and read into the record this other memo just to.
Then we're gonna, then we're gonna mark it, I see.
Yeah, Exhibit I, how's that? This is a memo from Les Godin, a building inspector, the zoning enforcement officer, dated August sixteenth. I have reviewed the submitted information off of the following comment. The stated height for the existing building is approximately thirty-seven feet. This height exceeds the height allowed under current Georgetown zoning, Chapter one sixty-five. The current definition of building height was added to the bylaw on five-two-twenty-eleven. The code in effect at the time of construction of the existing building in nineteen ninety-seven did not define height with respect to the existing natural grade or finished grade. Therefore, it is my opinion that the existing building height is a pre-existing nonconformity. The construction of the proposed addition for an in-law apartment will not increase the nonconforming nature of the structure as stated in Georgetown zoning, Chapter one sixty-five ninety-four. That's Exhibit I. And I'll make one comment. Les was not intending to make the determination that it was, you know, that would generally be done by this board. What he meant was that the proposed work falls outside of the nonconformity that he's identifying. It has nothing to do with the height, as you can look on the plan, the building height is what he's talking about. This addition is to the back. So it doesn't come into play at all is what he was getting at. So he's identifying a nonconformity, but in this case, a special permit. He's saying everything else would be completely conforming that they're proposing, so.
Because when the elevation plan came in, it was not just a different number, and then it wasn't down to the bottom. So he kept, Les did the calc, recalculating.
Right. I'm gonna give these back to you before I lose track of them.
Great, thanks.
Okay. Are there any audience members here that would like to comment on the project? The owners here? How are you?
Good, good.
The proposed tenant.
Okay, good. Good to have everybody present and accounted for. You've obviously seen the plans.
Would be homeless tenant.
All right. Duly noted. You guys don't have any comments? Okay.
Other than Patty's been very helpful to the whole process, so we wanna thank her for her cooperation with us.
Thank you, Patty.
Appreciate your help. So you guys have any questions at this point? Fire away.
I really don't have any questions. I think it's pretty obvious it's a, it's a, it's a great project. There's no real questions. I'm glad they get their deck back. No, I don't really have any, any issues with this at all.
Dave, you've always got a couple of comments over there, I know you've got something.
I actually, just to confirm, the deck now and the proposed structure are gonna be the same distance out? Or will it, is it, in other words, what I missed was how far out is that gonna go? Further than the existing deck?
Yes, yes. Existing deck is.
Twelve feet?
Jeff, twelve, twenty-eight, four by twelve. And this is gonna go out how far?
Twice the distance. I mean, to the longest point of the L, it's, it's going out eighteen. Twenty-four the longest, eighteen at the shortest. So the proposed deck will be bigger, only to cover the entire area. Aesthetically, we didn't think it was gonna look good to have half, you know, portion of rubber roof being shown, so. It's gonna be an expensive deck.
And then.
It depends how you look at it.
Thousand square feet of composite decking is not cheap.
No.
As you can ask him.
It slopes pretty far down, yeah, the back.
Yeah, it goes steeper as it goes further out.
Pretty steep, yeah.
It flattens out at the leaching field and it drops.
So this says seventeen-six from the proposed, or the existing deck on the plot plan? Yep.
Yep.
And then, I just wanna be sure that I'm, I'm straight here. From the new structure, I know it meets the ten-foot radius based on your commentary, but do you know how far it is from the edge of that to the septic tank?
From the edge of the tank to the proposed addition is ten feet.
Exactly.
Yes.
We have any issues this time with the calculation of square feet, right? Actually, under seven hundred anyway, so it doesn't matter. Sharon, any comments?
Me?
Yeah, you.
No.
Hiding over there in the corner.
I am. I peeked at the house from the front. It's hard to do, 'cause it's such a steep hill, that's not, not my worry. I'm sure you have it all figured out.
I only know it 'cause friends of mine live next door.
Oh, there you go.
Ten. So. So I've seen the house before, I didn't realize this was coming to zoning, but nothing matters. But the septic pipe that goes to the tank, is that being?
It's, that's what, one of the reasons why it's slab-on-grade, it's going right through the proposed construction. So they'll be excavating around just the invert of the new wall. So everything on the inside of the proposed addition shouldn't get disturbed. And then, where the exterior foundation wall is, he'll have to work around that and sleeve through the.
Where are you gonna go from there?
It's all existing, so that's, that same series.
Work around the existing pipe, I guess, right?
Yeah. They'll form right around it, they do a plywood box, and it'll penetrate the proposed frost wall. And the, also the new toilet and everything is right in that same line, so it'll be able to tie in all this plumbing.
No pump?
Nope. All the elevations work out to their favor.
It's pretty substantially downhill there, so.
Yeah.
And they put the tank far enough away that you didn't have to move the tank, so.
That's it for me.
Yeah, I don't wanna speak on behalf of all the board, but it's, I mean, it's pretty straightforward. Makes sense.
Yeah, I thought it was a, it was good design. One of the things that we look at, I was just pointing out to Sean, some of the things we have to look at carefully. One of the things is the preservation of single-family characteristic. A lot of these come in, and sometimes you wanna blow out a side. We've seen some that really look like a townhouse tacked on the side of a house or something like that. It's, kinda defeats the purpose of what we're trying to do, so. You know, this is a good application of the bylaw, and it's a, it's a good, I think it's a good design. Now, I will mention before we go any further that, you know, these special permits go with, go with ownership. So in the conditions that I'm sure you're familiar with by now in the bylaw that allow for an accessory apartment have to be met. And if, you know, you can't rent this out, and if mom decides to move to Florida or wherever it is, you never know what happens ten years down the road. You know, you have to be ready that you can't, you can't just rent it out as an apartment. So in some cases, people have actually converted that space back into living space. I say that 'cause kitchens can get kind of expensive sometimes, they, you know, and that kinda thing, so we have seen that in the past.
We've spoke with the homeowner about the consequences of that and so forth, so they're fully aware of that, they can't just rent it out in the future.
It can be sold also as an accessory, but the new owners would have to come back to the board, you know, and kinda go through this process and to the extent. Have we had one recently where somebody wanted to renew a special permit for an accessory? I think.
That was a while ago.
A lot long ago, but, you know, they, I would say it wouldn't be unreasonably withheld, but it's so that they can go through the same process to understand that that's what this apartment is for and all that kinda stuff. So, anyway. We've seen a few that are listed with accessory apartments for sale, and that's kinda like, well, you know, the thing expires, so homeowners will come in, they'll buy one thinking they have an accessory apartment, when in reality, they don't until they come and get a special permit for it, so. Just sort of FYI, so, anyway. Do you wanna make a motion on this? Is there any other comments by the board at this point? You guys, oh, good.
No, it looks good.
You, you ready?
Tick through here first?
Yep.
Never usually this easy.
Yep.
Well, I didn't know if we'd get into the whole height issue, but it clearly it's unrelated and it's grandfathered anyways, so.
And then here, and then once there's a vote, then.
There's always some.
I would move with the following.
That's why.
The application for.
You know, I had brought less in on the appointments that I made, and when that came up, he was able to, 'cause we try and do everything to make this go so smooth, so that was good that he did that.
Yeah, it was great, yeah.
Some towns, the thirty-five feet of the mid rafters span, you guys have it to the ridge.
Yeah.
So that's, that's really limited. It's hard to design that.
It's the building height by law.
Yep.
Do I have to read every exhibit?
No, I read the exhibit. You just have to read the housing conditions, so.
Yeah.
Does that be the ground?
Opposed to the rafters, we'll share the ceiling of this third floor, second floor.
Yep, that's actually correct.
Where this thing is right here. Where this thing is right here. Some towns have it here. We have it.
They say to the rafters and that means you can, you could, you have the ability to make a lot more interesting roof, too. You could make a nice steep roof and it wouldn't matter, cause it's the rafters, that makes a lot more sense.
Patty, it's basically, it's, it's considered what a ladder truck or a ladder can reach for fire.
Right, right.
I is bless his letter.
You know, each town has its own restrictions that they won't be able to reach to the ridge. Where some towns, they only have to reach to the mid of the rafter, which is how far their ladders go.
Yeah, right.
Because in residential fire, they're not showing up with a ladder truck, they're showing up with.
Which in some towns like this, it's more typical to see a lower roof height, because we have limited resources.
Yes, the reason that's in here is cause she's saying they need to.
Okay. Okay.
Where's your driveway gonna be? I'm just curious. Like where are you gonna park your car?
It, they have a large driveway off to the right.
So you walk from the, I'm just being.
It's right here.
From the, from, so you walk from the inside, you walk outside, not through there.
Well.
Sorry Patty, we're just working through this.
If they, if they give her a garage, I don't know if they're gonna give her one, but if she gets a spot in there, she'll be able to walk through.
Depends on what she's paying.
Oh, I thought.
I was already paying for the deck.
I thought you said you couldn't get to the garage from the in-law.
She can, there's no direct access from the garage to the accessory apartment, it has to go through the basement.
Yeah, it's a basement. She can literally pull her car in, walk through the basement.
Face into the, oh, I understand what you're saying, okay, got it, got it, got it.
If her son-in-law wanted to give up his.
Well, sure, with all the lakes and, you know, the camping gear.
Actually, or they is short, it doesn't fit too well.
Take a minute, retweet it.
Yeah, no, no, I think it makes sense. No, I think we're, well, we're okay.
You think another car's gonna fit there?
More organized than the last time. Better add it anyways.
Need a Fiat.
It'd look good in that, John.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Convertible.
All right, so I think we had a little sidebar here, I apologize, Sean's.
Sidebar.
A motion here, so.
Okay, thank you, yeah, I'd like to, uh, propose a motion, uh, for eight Long Hill Road to approve an accessory apartment. Uh, I'd like to make a motion that the board finds that the application is desirable to the public convenience or welfare, that it will not overload any public water or other municipal services so as to unduly subject any area to hazards affecting health, safety, or the general welfare, that it will not impair the integrity or character of the district or adjoining districts, that it will not cause an excess of that particular use, which could be detrimental to the character of the neighborhood. I'd like to further move that this, uh, application for a special permit be granted eight Long Hill Road with the following conditions, that an accessory apartment be occupied by relatives of the owner only and not to be used as a rental property. And the primary dwelling must be owner occupied per bylaw, chapter one sixty-five, section sixty-nine B. That this house is sold, transferred, or if there's any change to the occupancy and the special permit lapses, and the owner must apply to the board for a new special permit. That the apartment shall be inspected by the building inspector before occupancy per chapter one sixty-five dash one sixty-nine D for plans submitted and amended with a letter from the building inspector dated eight sixteen twenty sixteen, marked as exhibits B through H. And that per correspondence from the Board of Health, that the applicant received approval from, for the proposed accessory apartment located at eight Long Hill Road in Georgetown with a four-bedroom deed restriction, which the owners will be responsible to record at the registry of deeds. Recording will take place after the zoning board approves the proposed accessory apartment special permit and before the building permit application is signed by the Board of Health, marked as exhibit A.
Awesome.
Hold up. The granting, will you grant it?
Okay, so I moved to grant the special permit to John and Rachel, councilor of eight Long Hill Road, assessors map fifteen, lot fifty-seven J, Georgetown, Massachusetts, for an accessory apartment, addition to the rear of the property where the deck currently exists. As the application met the requirements of the Georgetown zoning bylaw, chapter one sixty-five, section sixty-nine, A through G. The apartment will be six hundred and eighty-six square feet, does not exceed the greater of either seven hundred square feet or thirty-three percent of the livable floor area of the primary dwelling and the design presented kept the single-family characteristics of the neighborhood pursuant to Massachusetts general laws, chapter forty-eight, section nine in the Georgetown zoning bylaws, chapter one sixty-five, sections nine, sixty-nine, seventy-eight, and seventy-nine.
Now you're done.
Hold on.
Nice, okay. All right, uh, do I hear a second on that?
Second. Got that incorrect, Sharon.
Okay, so there's a motion on the floor, it's been seconded to, um, grant a special permit. Uh, is there any discussion on this? No further discussion, none at all? Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, non, motion carries, I want to do a roll call, cause it's unanimous, so.
Okay.
Um, I need to read.
Took it.
Yep.
All right, bear with me, Asher. So, um, the zoning clerk has fourteen days, you're gonna, uh, your permit, the special permit's been granted by the board. The zoning clerk has fourteen days to file a decision. Any appeal of this decision shall be made pursuant to Mass General Law, chapter forty-eight, section seventeen. Within twenty days after the date of notice of the decision filed with the town clerk. An applicant may file, uh, this decision before the twenty days, but does so at their own risk. I recommend that you wait the twenty days. Um, lapse of special permit, per Mass General Law, chapters forty-eight, section nine, special permits granted shall lapse within a speci- a specified period of time, not more than two years, which shall not include such time required to pursue or await the determination of an appeal, if there is one, referred to in section seventeen. If a substantial use thereof is not sooner commenced, except for good cause, or in the case of a permit for construction, uh, if construction has not begun by such date, except for good cause. So basically, you got two years to begin work, except under cer- circumstances.
You only got twenty days to finish these drawings.
Yeah, all right, so, yeah, right, they're not gonna be included, so.
Fourteen, then twenty.
All right, so there's.
Yeah, thirty-four.
Yeah, you have fourteen, well, you could, it may be filed sooner than that.
Yeah.
These usually get filed within a week, probably.
Yeah.
This one's gonna be pretty quick. What's today, Wednesday?
Take, take your time.
Tuesday. This'll be filed next week, um, probably right now.
Probably, yeah.
And then twenty days after the filing, and the appeal period ends. So when you start, that's up to you, but don't wait longer than two years, or you're gonna be right back in the seat again. All right.
Then we need a motion to close and then a motion to adjourn.
Okay, do I hear a motion to close the hearing for eight Long Hill Road?
Make a motion to close me.
Okay, David, second by Sharon, anybody, uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, thanks David. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right, meeting adjourned, thank you.
Thank you.